It is 6:30 in Reed Field, Maine. Please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you all for joining us this evening on Zoom and as well as live. Uh, we have, we have, uh, Carol Doran-Boss, who is a select board member, is here on Zoom. Um, and she will be joining us that way. Catherine Woodson is, excuse, this evening, it is her birthday. Uh, so thank you very much, Catherine. Uh, we hope you're having a great birthday. Uh, we begin the evening with our acceptance of the Select Board minutes of June 27, 2022.
I'll make him go ahead and make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Uh, there has been a motion to accept. There is a second to accept the minutes of June 27, 2022. Uh, and I would add the delay to this pending possible changes according to Angelica. Um, so we will add that as well. Um, all in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, we move now to item 22002. These are the warrants. Uh, this is, um, we're straddling two fiscal years and Sean will tell us more about that.
Yeah, so warrant 55 is for $30,634. The key pieces out of that was our waste management disposal for $11,256.69 and our payment to main employee health was $8,268. We had a subsequent small warrant for 56, um, for $834.56, which was just a bunch of fees, state fees.
And, and just to clarify, the reason that we are still, there are some things that come in that have to be allocated towards, um, fiscal year, the last fiscal year. And so we're just catching up those accounting issues. Yes?
Yeah, bills come in, uh, in, in, in July for things that were paid and accrued in June.
Okay. Um, very well. Uh, any questions? And I am also looking at the Zoom.
Have questions?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure which warrant it was. I'm sorry. There was one on the janitorial service fee. Is that on the one that we're talking about right now?
I don't have them all in front of me and I.
That would have been on 55. Yes.
55?
Yeah.
Okay, so I thought we had a brief discussion on that. Um, that I had thought that was a bit steep and I thought we were possibly going to look at other alternatives. So I'm not sure where we are with that, but I do have somebody that might be interested, but we don't know the details of how.
I believe that was the last bill, Carol, and we have, right? That was the last one?
Yes, so that was the last bill. Uh, cleaning services are back in-house as they were before we became short-staffed. Uh, well, eight months ago probably, so. But we're now back able to take that in-house and save some money.
Is that clear?
Thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, excellent. Any other questions? All right. Um, I would entertain a motion to accept the warrants. There we go. It's been moved.
Second.
Second, uh, to accept the warrants, uh, 55, 56. Um, and we'll do those separately before we get to one and two. All in favor? And Carol, I see you acknowledge in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Uh, Sean, you want to do one and two for us?
Yes, so warrants one and two, um, were for the sum of $375,014.22. A big chunk of that was the first payment for the year to RSU 38, $309,458.75. Uh, there was a payment to mainland for the intersection design on P Ridge for $5,500. And then there was a, um, a payment, a full payment made to dispatch for $8,570.10 and that's our dues for the year, not just half.
That's warrant one too.
Any other questions? All right. I would entertain a motion to accept warrants one and two. So move. Thank you, Steve. Uh, it's been moved.
I'll second.
And seconded to accept warrants one and two. All in favor? Good. And Carol, you have acknowledged in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Uh, we now move to, um, items, uh, communications. We have 15 minutes allotted for this. Uh, we'd like to start with five minutes for select board communications. Do any members of the select board wish to say anything right now? I don't see anyone in person. And Carol, are you all set? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, being done, uh, we move to staff reports. We have five minutes, uh, for our town manager report and the treasurer's report. Eric, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Uh, I'll let you know that the treasurer's report, uh, will be delayed. Um, uh, with Teresa being out for a little bit there. Um, uh, we, um, you know, are still working on the check reconciliation and other, uh, end of month activities. So I will just run through my town manager's report and, uh, that should be pretty brief as well. Uh, so with respect to administration and personnel, uh, we have hired two part-time summer beach attendants and maintenance staff, uh, and I'm glad to have, uh, two young high school kids on board, um, because it's always good to have, um, that different perspective and hopefully they can stick with us for a little while during the summer months.
What are their names?
Oh boy, you had to ask. Uh, one's Dunphy and the other.
Seth. Seth Dunphy.
Seth Dunphy and, uh, Ethan.
Seth and Ethan.
Seth and Ethan.
Thank you very much.
Ethan just started today, so, um, yeah. Um, we are now in the fiscal year 2023, so that covers, uh, July 1, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Uh, the year-end process went well at the end of June and I want to thank Teresa for taking care of that. Uh, she, um, did a good job moving that forward. Our summer residence meeting is 5:00 PM on August 5th at the town office. And that's just a general opportunity for folks that are, uh, summer and seasonal residents to come and speak to, um, town staff and members of the board that might wish to attend, uh, about issues that they, um, feel are important. Uh, most of our summer residents are, are not voters, so this is a chance for them to have, uh, input. Uh, one of the things that's happened as a result of that, uh, would be Sunday hours at the transfer station. They advocated for that. Um, and they've also been advocating for, for some, um, action on, uh, or consideration of mooring. So that's something else that we're going to be looking at. But I just wanted folks to know that that is happening, August 5th, 5:00 PM at the town office. Uh, and, uh, the last time I have on administration is to say that I have put in a lot of time trying to work with our boards and committees to improve, um, the tools that they have available for, uh, remote meetings and hybrid meetings so that we can all, uh, participate effectively together, uh, whether in the room or, or not. Uh, and so that's been something that we've been working continuously. Uh, but, uh, we did just put out a big, uh, six-page instructional memo, along with a few other pieces of information to just help make that process easier. Uh, it is not, uh, you know, a, a simple thing to have a meeting, uh, in person and remotely. Uh, we do have technological issues. We have, um, challenges in, in, uh, making sure that people can communicate, um, in both locations, uh, equitably. So, uh, we're all trying to, to, to do as best we can with that. And hopefully there are some new tools in place, uh, that will make that a little bit easier for our volunteer, uh, boards and committees. Uh, moving on to roads, traffic, parking and safety, uh, crack sealing is scheduled for late July. Uh, and road striping will be happening following that. We will be putting out an RFP for, excuse me, uh, the long lines, which are the, the fog lines and central lines, as well as the crosswalk stop bars and other, um, pavement markings. Uh, roadside, roadside mowing is complete. Uh, Matt Seams quickly took, uh, um, took to the John Deere mower that we use for that, uh, and was able to get everything done in pretty quick order. Uh, so we will not be doing the roads again until the fall. Uh, if you see anything that was missed or needs a particular attention, let us know. Uh, and we can come back and take care of it, but, um, I think we got most everything in that first pass. Uh, and the RFP for design services for the church road sidewalk, uh, has been issued. Um, and that is just again, the, the RFP to solicit an engineer to help us with the design and planning process. Uh, so we're still a long ways off from any construction discussions. Uh, moving on to transfer station, the household hazardous waste collection day was a great success. Uh, it was viable for both, um, our residents and residents of other towns, uh, who were able to dispose of their waste. Um, having residents from other towns participate helped defray the cost for our own residents, uh, because we shared the initial setup cost with more, with more folks. So that's, uh, another successful, um, hazardous waste collection day. Brush grinding is complete at the transfer station and we will be again accepting, uh, material there. So if folks have brush to bring in, we can, uh, we can accept that again, uh, now that the safety issue has, uh, passed as far as having, uh, that equipment on site. Uh, and I wanted to say that the solid waste, solid waste and recycling committee met last week, uh, and they will be taking a proactive approach with budgeting because we do have some pretty significant capital expenditures coming up, uh, and, uh, costs are going up pretty quickly, uh, for all of our services there. Uh, and so we're going to have to take a look, uh, both at what we're spending and how we're collecting revenue. So they will, they will also be looking at, um, the fee schedule as well to make sure that we're able to keep pace, um, you know, with, with rising costs. So that's my manager's report, Dennis, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a quick question.
Go for it, Carol.
So Eric, um, going to the church road sidewalk, I've heard from residents that long ago, like before bids went out and a design was crafted and so on and so forth, there was discussion of having like a meeting with all the affected property owners, um, and hear their concerns and stuff, and I'm not sure that happened. So is that going to take place before? So have we spent money on any plans yet?
No, we haven't. So, um, part of the, the, part of the stewardship process that we have from a professional engineer, uh, is to help with managing those public meetings, um, and helping to shape, um, you know, how some of that stuff can happen. Uh, it, it's not really valuable to have a meeting when we don't know what we're even necessarily talking about. So getting that professional engineer in is one of the very first steps. Uh, but rest assured, we will be having multiple meetings, uh, with, uh, residents, uh, from the town universally, uh, who have an interest in that facility and the, the, the sidewalk there. Uh, and also, uh, meeting specifically with property owners, uh, who are on church road, on both sides of the road, because, uh, I have had residents on both sides say they want it and residents on both sides say they don't want it. So, uh, it's going to be a, a community discussion around that project and how to proceed with the, the minimal impact, if in fact we do proceed. So, um, there are no foregone conclusions with that project, um, other than that there's a safety issue there that needs to be addressed, which I think everybody can agree to. So, um, we will be holding those meetings and this engineer, RFP, uh, is a way to help us move forward and get, and get to those meetings in an efficient way.
So, so that, um, work of the engineer is what at this point? I guess I don't understand what, what part they're playing at this point.
They would be helping to come up with the design, but they, they can't do that without having communications with the public.
Oh, but the, the question is, is what side of the street is it going to be on? So it seems.
That's a question we're going to do.
Egg. I know, but it, to have a design, uh, what, before we decide which side of the road is appropriate, seems premature.
Well, we won't be. So I guess what I'm saying is the engineer will help come up with that design in consultation or in consideration of public feedback, uh, recommendations from MDOT, uh, feedback from the, uh, the utility companies, um, that have, uh, right-of-way's there, including CNP in the, uh, water district. Um, so the engineer's job is to help, uh, put all of these things together in a way that makes sense and helps us come to a decision. So it, it's not necessarily the chicken or the egg. They're not going to be designing in a vacuum. Um, part of what they will be doing is helping to, uh, you know, develop a process to come up with a design.
Okay, thank you.
They will also be making some recommendations, but not, not in a vacuum.
Thank you, Carol. Anything else? Excellent. Um, anything else? We'll go to boards, committees, commissions and departments. Um, we have the, uh, minutes, uh, that were submitted, uh, from the cemetery committee minutes, uh, April 25th and May 16th of this year, and the road committee minutes of July 8th, 2021, uh, which we were glad to get. Um, so, um, we are thankful for that. Um, we move on now to public communication. Uh, this is the point of the meeting where members of the public may address the, uh, public. Are there people in the audience who would like to address the public? Raise your hand. Excellent. I just want to make sure because if there are multiple ones, what I'm going to do is give you each about three minutes, um, about three minutes. So thank you very much. Uh, I just want to check online. Are there any people online who would also like to speak as part of the public? You can raise your hand. You could somehow indicate or we'll just keep it live. All right. Thank you very much. Would you like to be our first one? Go for it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And since there are multiple folks, I am going to make sure we have enough time.
We don't, we don't accept materials at the meetings that haven't been presented beforehand.
Okay, yep. You can just leave it right there. Yes. Oh, yes. Yeah. Yes, that sounds like a good one. Can we, we'll go ahead and do that now. Eric, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Uh, we'll suspend this, uh, right now and we will move to, uh, if it's the pleasure of the board, I don't mind it. It's just due for Eric's appointment. Um, we move to item 23004. Consider the appointment of Eric Johnson to the age-friendly committee. Eric is here. Um, and you can find, uh, the information about his, uh, application, um, in your packet. And I'm going to try to find what page that's on. There it is. Um, is Michelle here, by the way? Hi, Michelle. We'll do yours next if you'd like. Um, Eric, this is your first time, uh, joining the age-friendly committee. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Excellent. Um, and it says here in your, um, you're a first-time appointment. It's a three-year term, so you'll be working for three years. Um, does the select board have any questions here in person? All right, Carol, do you have anything for Eric?
No, I'd like to move to appoint Eric Johnson to the age-friendly group.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Eric Johnson, uh, as a representative to the age-friendly committee with a commission that runs from, uh, this evening, uh, until, um, the, oh, here we go. Yes, uh, June 30th, 2025. Um, if there's no other discussion, all in favor? Good. And Carol, let me just take a look. I see you in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Eric, thank you very much for your, uh, volunteerism and joining this committee. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I'd just like to thank everybody and.
Got it. Thank you very much. It's good. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir. Um, in, in the sake of time also, i- if it is okay with the board, I'd also like to get, uh, Michelle in there as well. Okay? No, thank you for that. Thank you for the reminder too. I appreciate it. Takes a village. No, no, no. It's, it's helpful. I, I, it's perfect. Michelle, uh, this is Michelle Fiori. Okay. Um, and this is, you are also a first-time appointment to the, uh, library board of trustees, uh, which is fantastic. Thank you very much. Uh, would you like to just introduce yourself and ta- uh, tell us a little bit about why you want to do this?
Um, sure. I am a teacher of 17 years. I recently moved to Reed Field in November. Um, and I just have, haven't met too many people in the community and I thought this would be a great opportunity to do so. And, um, I have a commitment to literacy as well as, um, seeing the library as a community base for Reed Field.
Awesome. Your, uh, your qualifications are fantastic. Uh, it was, thank, thank you very much for, thanks for choosing us. I guess is really what I want to say. Uh, anything in person here? And then I'm going to check Zoom for Carol. Anything you'd like to add, Carol? All right. Then I would move to appoint Michelle Fiori, uh, to the library board of trustees, uh, for a term that begins tonight and ends on 6:30, 2025. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor? And Carol, I see you in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Michelle, you are free to go or you can stick around, whatever you'd like to do. I, I don't know why you want to stick around, uh, but that's okay. It's fun. We have fun. All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Now then, uh, are there members here in public who would like to address the, the select board? Raise your hand just to get a sense. Good. And is there anyone on Zoom who'd like to do that? You can unmute now. Excellent. All right. For the sake of time, I'm going to add, give you three minutes each, uh, and if, and I'll be, I'll be lenient as it goes, but, uh, we have other business and I just want to make sure we respect the agenda. So thank you very much. Bob, you may take the floor. Just introduce yourself and, and you know the process.
Robert Bittor, Bob Bittor, uh, and I live in Reed Field. Uh, there are two issues of some concern. One introduced the last meeting and they have to do with an inquiry into the, into the equality of, of, uh, of activities here in Maine and in this town. One has to do with non-disclosure agreements that are made, that employees in this town are required to sign. This should never happen. No woman who ever worked in an office should ever have to be made to sign a non-disclosure agreement. Three women have been made to do so. Two, two of those women, Deborah Nichols and Shereen Gilman, quit abruptly. We don't know why, but we do know that they were made to sign non-disclosure agreements. Three men.
Personnel matters, probably not appropriate. Also, this is inaccurate.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm speaking.
Hey, hey, sir, sir.
Just a point of order, Bob.
Robert, Robert, please, please.
Three, don't take that.
I'm going to give you one more minute, buddy.
Three, three men were all, one minute, I haven't even spoken for a minute. Three men were also made to quit. Garrett Quintel, Jason Hanson, all of them, all of them were made to quit with the intention of silencing them from illegal activities by other people in this administration. We must find out why women are being made to sign non-disclosure agreements. That's the first inquiry. The second one is the Durham Boss report that was made last meeting. In it, there was a question to inquire into the planning board. I've, I've included here in this statement, the law, the select board law, Reed Field law that actually permits that to happen. Not only permits it, but requires the select board to perform that kind of inquiry. This is your obligation, obligation, under Reed Field law, in the, in the, in your own, uh, in your own directives, in your own bylaws and in the comprehensive plan. So we must have that and we must return to Karen Durham-Boss, the, the, uh, select board, uh, member who was asked to stop speaking and that was absolutely out of line. The third and last issue, thank you, the last issue is that there are website, there's website, a town website in which my dead wife is being maligned for no reason. She's being called a criminal. This should never happen. Yes, a philanthropist, a woman who devoted all of her savings, $500,000.
Thank you, Robert. That's, that's enough. Thank you.
And now maligned. That's the way we treat.
Thank you, Robert.
Our citizens in Reed Field.
That's enough. Thank you very much. If any of the other members of the public would like to speak, we have three minutes for you as well. Go ahead, Aaron. Yeah, absolutely, buddy. Absolutely. Yeah, it's a little, you know, all kinds of stuff happening. There we go.
Good evening, guys.
Hey, how are you? Just say your name and all that good stuff.
Aaron Neely, Reed Field resident, also, uh, owner of Moon Glow Cannabis, just opened, uh, fairly recently. You guys may have noticed.
Congratulations.
Also like to call attention how, uh, how, how tasteful the outside is.
Looks great, yeah.
Doesn't look like the character of the town has been changed at all, actually, which is great. Um, and, uh, but, but I, the one thing I, I just wanted to mention was I was, uh, uh, told there may be, uh, uh, I guess a move to eliminate parking on Route 17. And, uh, I'm not sure, is this part of the, going to be part of the discussion tonight? Uh, eliminating parking on Route 17?
Well, no.
Nope.
No?
Oh, oh. I mean, uh, there is, um, there's already been discussion about the, um, some of the parking spots in front of the post office, but.
Nothing's happening on your side of the street.
On that other end of the corner.
Okay, all right. Sorry, that's, I'm sorry for wasting everybody's time.
That's all right. No, I'm glad. Hey, clarification is good.
Business plug, Aaron. Well done.
Right, yeah, exactly.
We're open till 11 to 7, except for Monday.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. No, absolutely.
I would like to, you know, just give a plug for the old parking on Route 17. Gosh, gosh, the parking's good there and, uh, I.
Your side is, your side's sticking around.
I'm so, I'm so happy.
Yes.
That there's so much parking.
All right, good. Good. You're keeping the agenda moving. Thank you very much. Uh, either one, go ahead. You got it. Yes, sir. And, and if you don't mind, just, uh, introduce yourself there at the podium. You know this deal. Give you the same three minutes.
It's been a long time since I've been, uh, here at a board meeting. My name is Lee Sandler. I live on Route 41. And I've been talking with Eric about the mooring situation in Winthrop because I'm involved directly in that. Um, I'm one of the owners of property in Winthrop as well as one of the boat owners at the Cove. Um, and he asked me to come up and give a little bit of insight from our point of view. I don't know if three minutes will cut it, but I'll do the best I can.
That's okay, buddy. Don't you worry.
You know, board members are, are, are our, our community. They're part of our community, whether it's here in Reed Field or out in Winthrop. They're all good people. They have a hard job to do. I certainly wouldn't want your job, including Steve, which I, nice to see you, Steve.
It's a great job. No complaints.
The, the bottom line here is that it was, if the ordinance was passed with a very broad brush.
And this is in Winthrop. Yes, good.
However, you've got to understand that what we have in Miranda Cook is a great pond. The state maintains and runs the water. They own the water, not the municipality, not the landowners, it's the state. However, the state also passed something called Title 38, which allows a municipality to have certain rights and indeed can pass ordinance ordinances. In this particular case, we have a lot of citizens here in Reed Field that own waterfront that are frightened that they may look outside their window someday and find a massive amount of pontoon boats and other boats by their property. Let me assure you, it ain't going to happen. Number one, we, you need access. Well, all we have here is the state landing, the state, the state rim. That's it. And that's at best, that's a very tight and poor area. You could moor a few boats in front of that. The most that you would be able to get safely there is four. That's about it. I, there's not enough room unless you extend over 200 feet, which brings in another law. So it's probably most likely not going to happen, but if you do pass an ordinance under 38, you are required, if anybody is moored there, you're going to be required to find them another mooring space with easy access. And there isn't any in Reed Field. Title 17 says that I, as a boat owner, if I'm doing time, you let me know, um, can cross over your land if it's, if it's undeveloped land.
About a minute.
Okay, if it's undeveloped land, it allows me to cross over to get to that great pond. That's Title 17. What I'm saying is, before you pass anything, make sure that you're not biting off more than you could chew. If you notice, the boats are still in the, in the, in the cove. It is an expensive proposition. You have to have a harbor master. That's $65,000 a year. You have to have a boat, motor, gas car, trailer, truck. I think I've said enough.
You perfect use of your time. Thank you very much, Lee. We appreciate it. Um, and I think you guys want to, all right. And we'll do the same, uh, if you don't mind.
You said nothing to be cast out to you. How can I assure you guys with a letter to make sure you guys have it on file?
We would have you email it to the town manager and he would disseminate it to us.
I never replied. And I'm sure he already didn't forward it to you because I sent it to him back in August.
Okay, so I would say, uh, our emails are directly on the website. All of the select board, you can go to the Reed Field website and every single one of us are on there with our phone numbers.
Okay, and will you reply that you received it?
I, I.
You can get back from him.
I absolutely will.
Okay.
So thank you very much. We'll give you your three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joel Parker. I'm a resident of Reed Field on Church Road. Uh, we heard, I don't know if it's a rumor or not, but this, there's more push for, uh, developing the ball field grounds on our road and we didn't know if that was true or not. We're just trying to figure out if there's any more information about that. Uh, we just had some concerns because we're talking about the sidewalk earlier too and, uh, Eric is saying it's a long ways off, but there's no real date surrounding that. You know, what, what does a long ways off? Does that mean six months or a year out or a year and a half? How far are we from any type of real construction going on? So.
Because to quote Eric last August, when he spoke to me, he said it was nowhere near even five years, max, minimum of five years before anything's gonna happen with the sidewalk.
Understood.
And so we, as residents, that maybe impacted by that, don't know what that timeline looks like. To get more generality, saying long ways off, you know, it'd be nice to have some idea of what we're planning wise to figure out what's gonna happen with that. Also, you're saying that there's an impact with like the safety concerns on that. And I can say, in a general sense, and anecdotally, that may be true, but is there any type of study or any information to support that there's a safety concern and that's the reason why we need a sidewalk on Church Road? I, I don't know if that was, what's driving the safety concern, I'm not sure. Is this anecdotal or is it some type of actual safety reports or accident reports of that area? You know, I don't want the action driven by that sidewalk by something that's just kind of a, oh, it's a common sense approach and we think, oh, just because we see there's traffic going through there and people walking, that there's automatically safety concern. This is one of our thoughts on that. And then we also want to say that if the sidewalk is put on our side of the road, we have the concern that our driveways are very close to the roadway.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I don't know what side you're on.
We're on the eastern side of it, yeah.
So the non, the non.
The non-collar.
Union House.
Exactly.
Okay, so you're on the other side. Okay, gotcha, guy. I apologize to being interrupted, it won't be a part of your time, don't you worry.
We just have short driveways and even when we park right now, our vehicles are very close to the roadway. So we figure if the sidewalk is put in on that side, that there'd be concern that people may have to walk around our vehicles. Off sidewalk to get in the road to get around them. That's a concern and there's some sort driveways kind of on that side of the road already. Again, as you said, there's some residents on either side of the road that say yea or nay to the sidewalk. And I know that you have good reasons both for and against, but that's just one of our concerns is that we still want to be held personally liable for, as homeowners, if our vehicle is intruding onto the sidewalk because the driveway is so short that somebody or a family walks around the vehicle and possibly gets on the roadway into a hazardous situation.
I hear you. Your, your, your time is, is up, but I, if you don't mind, I might speak to this a little bit. This is something that we are going to have our Select Board retreat coming up. And really, all it is, is we come in here and we eat dinner and meet for about six hours and talk about stuff that we can do about, you know, goals that the Select Board could make and things like that. And I know that this is gonna be a discussion that we have, and I think you're absolutely right. I, I think we, we see it's best when there is thoughtful and truthful, insightful information. I agree with you, I don't want to build a sidewalk just because it's safe, I think that would be dumb. But I think what we need to do is figure out, does that engineering stuff involve measuring traffic? See who's speeding, what's the average? I know that that's been talked about and I'm just gonna tell you that. But, but send me your information and we'll make sure. And I think at the retreat, something we can talk about from this conversation is how can we communicate to the best of our ability as this moves forward? So, thank you.
And then the ball field, which we voted on, voted down, is now on the agenda to discuss and try to move forward still. Even though the citizens of our town have voted it down, here we are, not even a month later, and here we are. It's on the agenda, trying to push it forward. I just feel like it's a shady back door, you know, I, I have no idea what your plans for it being on the agenda tonight, but I just feel like you guys have been pushing this ball field expansion by all means necessary without true consideration of people's budgets and financing and fixed incomes to increase our tax dollars, all to just, you know, get a ball field because a bunch of people got it fixed in their head that this is what it needs.
Well.
So.
Thank you very much, we hear what you're saying. All right. Anybody else in person? All right, one last call for our Zoomers. Very well. Then we move on to appointments, reappointments and resignations. We do have to do item 23005, which is consider the resignation of Ed Sims from the Age Friendly Committee.
Make a motion to accept his recognition from the Age Friendly Committee.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the, with regrets, the resignation of Ed Sims from the Age Friendly Committee. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Excellent, and Carol, I see you in the affirmative, thank you very much. Ed, on behalf of the Select Board, thank you very much for your service. We appreciate everything that you have done. We now move on to old business. We have five minutes allotted for this, 22119, which is discuss the upcoming Heritage Day celebration, August 12th through the 13th. And I will do that. Heritage Days has a lot of stuff happening this year. And it is again Friday, August 12th and Saturday, August 13th, Friday and Saturday. We have our event, which always leads off Friday, which is the Wine and Cheese Social, which happens at the Historical Society. That's from five to seven and it's always a good time. It's a fundraiser and membership drive for the Historical Society. Saturday morning starts with a breakfast at the Masonic Hall above the post office. It's an $8 breakfast. Ed Dodge was very sad that he had to go up from $7 to $8. But they're doing $8 for people 10 and above. If you are under 10, you eat for free and that begins at seven o'clock and runs until 10. There is also a number of events happening at the library. There's the book sale, which is happening at the fire station. That goes from 10 to 2. Carol Darren Boss, our very own Select Board member, is hosting an open house at her new bed and breakfast right on Main Street. So that's a part of the celebration as well. On Saturday, there will also be a historical walk and trail walking with the Dale Potter Clark, who is also part of the Historical Society, and that begins at 10 o'clock. There is going to be a kickball tournament. It is happening, it is being sponsored by the Rec Department and I think we will hear more about that later tonight. The kickball tournament we had for a few years, it was fun. But this year, we want as many teams as possible. It's gonna be at the Fairgrounds Field. It's by international kickball rules, using official kickball balls. It's been a fun time in the past couple of years. We got away from it last year because they were doing the, the plowing, the pulling stones. But this year, the Kickball Reedfield World Championship Kickball is back. Teams can consist of nine people, all ages are welcome. If you can kick a ball, you can put a team in. Also, from 12 to 4 is going to be a makers market as well as food. And we're going to present the Spirit of America Awards all down at the beach. The big change this year is that there's going to be parking at the beach. Beach, beach people have wanted to have that and be able to sort of come down, park, walk around and see what's going on and they'll be able to do that this year. And so we'll have that and it should be a fun time. We will have hamburgers, hot dogs, and our food sponsor is the Weather Vane. So we just want to say thank you for that. But the Heritage Days food will be down there. We are presenting the Spirit of America Awards and we have some great makers. We have a painter, we have a blacksmith, as well as some other folks coming down to join us there. And that's all at the beach between 12 and 4. And then everyone's favorite, it's everyone's favorite. And it would be, you know, it wouldn't be Heritage Days without it, but there will be fireworks beginning around dusk, which around that time is about nine o'clock, 9:15. Just a note, and I'll say this repeatedly a lot, the beach will close at 5:00 PM because that's when the pyrotechnic company gets there and they have hundreds of pounds of high explosives and they don't want a beach full of people to be there. So again, the beach closes at 5:00 PM on Saturday, the 13th. And then look for some big boom booms in the sky. And that's what we will have. There'll be more information coming out about this. Heritage Days has its own Facebook page. There'll be more information coming out. I'm picking up signs tomorrow. Remember Heritage Days is always the second weekend in August. And it's a celebration of what makes our town great. So come on out and see something. We are accepting volunteers. If you are interested in being a volunteer, you can see me, you can send us a message or email me as well. So that's it. I want to honor the agenda and I'll be done with that. Any other information about Heritage Days? Okay, good. Wonderful. We move now to new business. This is a item 23006, which is discuss the 2022 tax commitment and various tax relief programs. Eric, do you want to give us a little background about this?
Sure, yeah, so every year, the Board of Assessors with their assessing agent, who is David Ledoux, sets taxes based on the amounts and figures approved at town meeting, as well as other expenditures, any exemptions that folks may have. And so what I had presented to the board was an estimate of where we might land with, with the tax commitment. What we're seeing is that the increase in valuation was a little bit less than what we had anticipated. So rather than being about one and a half percent, it was probably about 1%. A few other factors came together and so the assessors were needing to factor the values for all real estate, as well as land and buildings, both, both land and buildings and residential categories by 10% to keep pace with the state valuation. So a few things happening. Our mill rate has gone down from about 15.8 to about 14.8. However, due to increases in, in costs, primarily driven by the 8% increase in the RSU budget, we have a small increase in the out-of-pocket taxes that are being paid by residents. And so what we're seeing is a 14.8 mil rate, but an out-of-pocket expense for an average homeowner that has gone up by about $80 for the year. And that's for a, a home valued in current dollars at around $260,000. So what we end up with is an out-of-pocket impact that's essentially the same as it was in 2018. We had prices go up and then go back down again. And now they're coming back up again. So we're, we're back about where we were in 2018. So hopefully a manageable impact, but there's more to it than that. We do have a lot of assistance programs available in the, in the state and in the town of Reedfield. But I'll stop before I get into those and some clarification on those and ask if there's any questions from the board about the mill rate or the overall tax impact.
Anyone here? Carol, are you all set? All right, thank you very much. Eric? It looks like we're good to move forward.
So in the packets, I included information on two separate programs, both of which went into law this year. So there's been a lot of confusion between them. We've had, as of January 5th, we've had a senior tax assistance program that allows them to defer their taxes. And this is a program whereby they are essentially making an agreement with the state of Maine that they will have the option of not paying taxes, but having those taxes paid if they sell their home or if they pass away.
Which is why it is called a deferral, right? It, you're just deferring those taxes till later.
Absolutely, and so the state of Maine manages that program. They are the holder of that lien. They have a number of criteria, including income-based criteria, as well as age-based. You have to be over 65 or you can also apply if you have a disability that makes you fully disabled. So that is a program, again, was put into place last fall, but didn't become law until this January. It is one of those programs that wasn't widely publicized. It was funded initially through federal recovery, COVID recovery funds. But it is a good option for somebody that just doesn't feel they have the ability to pay their taxes, but wants to stay in their home, in their community. And so that's a good program, if you're willing to make that, that commitment and take on some of that burden. The other program is one that has received a lot of press lately. Unfortunately, that press has outpaced the state of Maine's communication with municipalities about what exactly the program is going to look like and how it's going to come to fruition. There's a lot of basic information out there and I'm gonna summarize it quickly. It is a senior tax freeze program. So any senior citizen has the ability to, if they're over the age 65, if you own a home and have owned it for the past 10 years, then you're eligible to apply and have your taxes frozen at the rate they were in the year prior to your application. So what is going to happen is people will be able to apply through the end of this year and then the taxes will be frozen at the rate at which they were last year. So that, that's the, the other program that's coming into effect. We don't have any guidance from the state of Maine on how that's going to happen. We don't have an application yet from the state of Maine. So I want people to be aware of that because it is a great program. There is no repayment required at this point. Your taxes are frozen, the state of Maine eats the difference between what your taxes are and what they would be. And they reimburse the town and the municipalities for those taxes.
So we're talking about two separate things, the deferral.
Yep.
And the freeze.
Absolutely, and the deferral is more like a reverse mortgage. The tax freeze is just exactly what it sounds like.
Sounds, yes, all the jargon, okay, good, yes.
So I did want to caution everybody that, be aware of it, apply for it when the time comes. But I want you to be aware that we don't have everything we need from the state to make that happen yet. So those are two very important programs. I also want to highlight the fact that the state of Maine has a property tax fairness credit program that's been in place for many, many years. It was the old circuit breaker program and that is an income-based program, but it also has an incentive for folks that are older than 65. And that can be a great way to reduce your tax burden. If you aren't interested in one of these other programs, there's also a local rider on that that we add reductions in your tax bill. If you apply and are eligible for the state program and then also apply for the local program. So quite a few different options there, but I wanted to try to put those out there, especially the two that happened this year to clarify the differences because there was a lot of confusion.
Excellent. Any questions about those programs?
I just have one question, Eric. Is there assistance at the town office for someone who's elderly and wants to apply for one of these and sure how to do it?
Absolutely, we, we, we help anybody that needs assistance with applying for these programs and any other assistance they might need, including local heating assistance or general assistance, all confidentially, of course.
Okay, thank you, very good question. Anything else for you, Sean? Carol, are you all set?
I just had a quick question. I think the state deferral program that I saw, it's like the application had to be received by April 1st or something. So I guess after that date, if you realize you can't pay your taxes in September, just had a cutoff date rather than, you know, you can apply whenever you realize you can't meet that payment. So that, the timing was a little bit interesting or curious. I didn't know if there's any consideration outside of that date, but I don't know.
My, Carol, my understanding is that there isn't and that date was established by the state of Maine. I think because it coincides with the date that taxes are, or that property values are, are firmed up. So any changes in value after April 1st apply to the next tax year. So I think they chose that date as a date of convenience for them, not so much for folks who might have a need. But you've got a good point and folks can apply for a tax abatement from the town of Reedfield if they have an issue with paying their taxes at any time. And that will be held and considered, I think, usually within a month.
Thank you for that clarification, I'm glad the town is there as a backup. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Carol. Anything further on these subjects, Eric? Shall we move forward? Excellent, then we move to item 2307. Consider an abatement for the 2021, 2020, 2020, 2021 tax year. And I can explain this, the assessors met earlier, and I can explain it to the Select Board. Basically, the assessing agent, who is David Ledoux, in 2019, there were two lots for the folks named here on page 47, Jason and Melissa Tibbs. There was a combining of two separate lots that were the same use. When David went in to make a note in the software so that if someone came along later, they could see what he did, he had to activate one of the accounts and then re-delete it after he made the note. he had to activate one of the accounts and then re-delete it after he made the note. He didn't do that. And so it was just an example of, you know, he tried to do it. We have to, as the select board, approve this one because it's the furthest back. The Board of Assessors have already done it. This happened for two years. He was getting, they were getting assessed twice. And so now we are basically giving that back and abating this. The select board needs to do this one because it is the oldest one and it is outside of the realm of the Board of Assessors. Does that make sense? Any questions? Carol was just in the meeting, so I know she's all set. Very moved. Would you like to make a motion?
I mean, would we accept?
It's been moved and seconded. Seconded to accept the abatement for $518.31 in tax year 2020-2021. Is there any further discussion? Very well, all in favor? Very, and good. Carol, I see you vote in the affirmative. Thank you very much. All right. We move now to consider funding sources and next steps for the Fairgrounds Community Park. This is item 23008. We have 10 minutes for this. And I believe Hannah Flannery, who is the head of the REC department, is here to tell us a little bit about this. Go ahead.
Hannah Flannery, President of REC, I don't have a lot to add to this other than that there's definitely still a need for the fairgrounds or a field to happen for the girls in this community. For the softball field and there's definitely a need for basketball court outside. And given that our poor coaches who are trying to run a clinic can't even do it next week because the flooring got delayed in the basketball gym at school, which, you know, we're all supposed to be abused. So given that, I'm just going to say, if there's a way that we can fundraise or find funding to help move this project forward, that would be incredibly awesome.
And the difference there would be the vote was against the $500,000 bond, $500,000 bond, right?
For taxpayers.
For taxpayers, right. And so this, okay, yeah. Is there anyone else from REC who, Greg, do you have anything? I know you're there, okay. Excellent. Select Board have anything to say?
I do.
I appreciate it. Oh, go ahead. I'm coming to Zoom right now. Here we go. Carol, is that you?
Did someone else have something to put in?
No, no, I was just about to check the Zooms.
Yep. Carol can go first.
Go ahead, Carol, and then we'll get to Steve.
Um, I know the voters voted. I'm not real keen on, and I know a lot of it, it seemed the pushback was the money part. I do know there were other concerns, wetlands and parking and all kinds of stuff. If I can put a thought out there, and Steve I know is like familiar with this approach, is the track and the ski, cross-country ski paths at the high school went through some fundraising because it was a really huge all-in-one project. So they did it piecemeal and they were fundraising. And as they raised funds, then they went through that step. And then they went to the next most important thing needed at that location and then the next. Um, I would like to see something similar happening at the fairgrounds. I think there's a lot of agreement that the softball field is equitable for the girls. It is different than a baseball field. It is, sounds like it's something needed as far as the rec volume. So why can't we put out an estimate of just the softball field, dollar amount just for that, and possibly the basketball court just for that on the ballot for November? And I know there was talk in the stuff that we have in the agenda using ARPA funds or whatnot. And what is the dollar amount for just those two pieces and put that out to the public? So that there's some public approval of the project in general. I think it would probably pass overwhelmingly. And then if it's voted down, then we can look at possibly just fundraising. But I'm a little bit squeamish of saying, hey, you guys voted this down, but we're going to go ahead with it anyway. I think it's, we do need to hear the outcome of the vote. But I think those two pieces were the popular parts of the piece and something that's needed for the kids in the community and whatever. It just like all or nothing approach, I think is probably inappropriate.
All right, thank you, Carol. Okay, there we go. Echo, Steve, go ahead.
I guess I would say I'm more than a little bit squeamish about just putting it back out to the voters. They voted it down. That would not be a good move, my mind. And I think, Carol, you have some, you know, I think some of those ideas certainly have merit. And we've used that approach before at some things at school. But I'm of a mind that I would like to see us just reconsider everything with public input and not, so that we're not saying as a select board, this is what we think you should do. Because I think that there would be, there is value in trying to figure out more about, you know, you mentioned the idea of cost and to the taxpayer. I'm super sensitive of that, you know. But, you know, if we get people, I know there's a lot of people that are really motivated. And I would like to see something done for the kids without question, right? And I'm willing to work on that really hard. And I definitely have seen some really successful efforts where fundraising is done upfront, you know. And that it's harder, you know, but it can be done. And I, what I would say is that the people who are really committed to making it happen, talk with the people who are worried and nervous about what concerns they have, try to mitigate those concerns and also come up with really valuable ways to keep the burden from falling primarily on the taxpayers. I think we can do it. So, I mean, I'm willing to work hard at it, but I don't feel we as a select board should take that on and say, this is what we're going to do.
I definitely don't want to have select board, or excuse me, I definitely don't want to have, you know, if it's not going to be taxpayer money, then, you know, we want to make sure we do private, you know, donate, you know, stuff, grants and things like that. Do you have something from, to add? Yes, can we help you, sir? I'm not sure.
Go ahead, yeah.
It's about this topic, okay. I missed the, I was doing something else. I missed the public speak, I'm sorry.
Gotcha, no worries.
I just, some of you are either old enough to remember or too young to remember that several years ago, we had a project by the Public Works and it was defeated. And there was a lot of motion in town, it divided the town, went on and on forever. And very quickly, the select board brought it back. It went down to defeat even worse. So I just caution the board, we've had two issues on the ballot that were rejected by voters. To bring them back too soon, or either one or both, I think is dangerous. I just want to throw that cautionary note out there. And Eric wasn't here then, it was a different town manager, so.
I remember hearing about it. I wasn't, I wasn't anywhere and connected with it.
I'm not sure you were born yet.
I was, I was, many moons ago, sir, but not as many as you.
That's all I ask, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Steve, nice to see you sitting here.
Always nice to have somebody older than me in the meeting, Greg.
Man. Thank you very much. I think that's, I think this is all very good. If there's nothing else about the field, the rec, we will move on, Sean?
Yeah, I just think this.
Oh, go, hang on one second, Carol?
So are we looking at fundraising for the entire project? Or are we going to prioritize what we want action on, like right away? That's where I'm coming from is what are we fundraising for, like right out the bat? That's going to get people cooperating.
Again, Carol, I don't think we should be making that decision. I think that's something that should be driven by the other folks who have a stake in it and everybody in town, really. I think that, again, some of your suggestions definitely have merit, but I don't feel like those are select board decisions at this point.
I can, sure. Sean?
Wait, 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 wait.
Yeah.
So if to do the whole project, we're talking, I think it was 350 upwards to 400,000. So if we're not able to even come close to that, then we get nothing. So it's like at this level, do we get something? And so I don't know how we proceed unless we're able to publicly fund everything. That's where I'm, I don't know if we raise a little bit of money, but don't come close to the full gamut. And do we get anything?
Well, I, to be honest with you, I just don't, I don't know if we have, are able to answer that just yet, Carol. That's, that's all I'm saying. I hear what you're saying. I think what the bottom line you were mentioning, if I hear correctly, is phases. I think that's what you were saying. But I don't think we know enough yet to not know what we don't know, if that makes any sense. Sean, go ahead, buddy.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think this is an important topic for our retreat and just so that we can be comfortable and a joint decision on this. And I think like Eric pointed out in the packet, there was just a lot of misleading and confusing information out there around the time. And so I think making sure we look at it carefully and we look at what phasing could like, what, you know, what supports are there that we didn't have at the time. Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Very well, we will move forward with our next item. And that is item 23009. Develop a process to consider potential mooring regulation in the town of Reedfield. Eric, you have 10 minutes to tell us about this.
Hopefully it'll take just five.
That sounds good.
But I did include a memo for the select board that gave a background of this issue. Most folks that are in town and been here for a little while understand that we are a lake community. We have a lot of water resources that are publicly and privately held. And so the issue of moorings has come up in the past. But Winthrop's action to implement a mooring ordinance has kind of spurred more discussion on this and given it a bit more urgency. That being said, it's a very complicated issue. I've had discussions with a lot of folks, residents, representatives from the Covey Water Shed District and other, you know, lake and property owners, including Lee, who was here earlier, who's very active in considering what's happening in Winthrop because of his connection there. So there's a lot to it. I've been around this type of regulation before. And there's no question, if you have a mooring and harbor ordinance, it is additional regulation. And that comes with the pros and cons. And I'm hoping that we never in the town of Reedfield get to the point of having to do the level or depth of regulation that was required in the marine environment, where we had hundreds of moorings and designated mooring fields. And people had defined scopes and they had a shackle that had to be tied with a certain type of wire. It was very specific and very time-intensive for the town and very costly for the property owners. But we also have a lot of concern about the town of Reedfield perhaps becoming like Lake Buena Pasachi, where we have, you know, floats and boats and moorings every place. And it's just a crowded, unpleasant place. So there's a lot of public concern about what could happen, especially if development continues and the pressure from Winthrop isn't adequately addressed, whatever that might be. Because there's different opinions about what's actually happening there or what might happen in the future, as you heard from Lee. So what I think is required is a thoughtful, deliberate process from the select board to consider this, much as we've done with other public issues. First thing I would suggest is scheduling an open house, a public hearing essentially, before the end of August so that the general public can come and comment on this issue waterfront or otherwise. The second item I'd recommend is scheduling a stakeholder meeting with representatives from the various lake associations and water districts. So this would be a more focused group with folks that are policymakers or representatives of broad groups of people to help understand how some of those groups might feel and want to approach this issue. And then the, and I'd hope to have that happen by the end of September. Most of those groups are year-round, unlike our residents that leave in the end of the summer. So August for the open public hearing, September for a focused stakeholder meeting. And then consider a survey, a general public survey on opinions relating to moorings and any further regulation that might be considered. And the last thing I would recommend would be an allocation of staff and legal resources to look into this a bit more. Because again, it's one of those situations where we don't know necessarily what we don't know. The state of Maine currently manages the waters in our town. And they do an okay job, but they're under-resourced. And it's a complicated world when you get into harbor and mooring ordinances, trying to understand who's responsible for what, what the requirements are. Can we have a harbor master who's just a volunteer or a stipend? Some good questions there. Do we have to have a full ordinance or can we have a light-duty ordinance that might just help protect natural areas and maintain free navigation? So those are some of the questions. So I guess I'm asking the board to take action if they would be interested on any of those four items with the first two being the first and foremost. And then we could move on from there with the others.
Well, this is, yeah, go ahead. Well, this is Sean. I just, I think this is an important conversation. And I think that we're getting too late in the season to try to do this and make a good idea without more information. I think trying to schedule something for the end of August, we're not going to get enough of the public here to hear what their thoughts are on it. It's not far away. And then I just think September, there's so many moving parts to this whole conversation and what's been happening in Winthrop. And are people moving down here? Are we really going to see effects of that? I think we've got to do a little bit more homework. I just, I don't want to rush this and not do it well because it could be a big deal.
I concur. I feel like the end of August is intense. And I also feel like, just my mind is like, this is a, this is a can of worms. Like, and if he's, if what you're trying to do.
You're not wrong.
You know, if what you're trying to do is like, you know, let's get this, let's do a little bit of due diligence and then, you know, see where people fall, that's fine. But I think, I do kind of agree. I'd like to see this happen more in like a springtime. But, you know, because there's nothing, I feel like this year, there's nothing.
I mean, what's going to happen in Winthrop right now could change based on some of the things they're going through too. I just, I just think we're going to put a lot of effort, resources into something that we're not going to do well. And we're already doing enough.
Yeah, I just feel like there hasn't, there, there.
Have we had complaints? Like, have we seen a change? I mean, I know it seems to always be busy, that boat landing, but are we seeing people try to put a mooring there?
So I guess the short answer is we probably have four or five moorings out there. And that's probably about what we had last year and maybe a little bit more than we had five years ago. But if you go back to 1992, there might have been more or less. It hasn't been a crisis, but the concern that I've heard from the public, and I did sit down with 15 or 20 residents a few weeks ago, was that the town needs to do something or which should consider doing something proactive to prevent a situation where we have a lot of these things coming in, not having had an adequate response. So that's, that's the reason it's being brought forward.
And I don't want to discredit those 15 people and thinking this, but I still don't think this, I think proactive is, I was talking about this now and still doing a little bit of homework and learning a bit more about what it's going to look like in Winthrop and such. But I think I was trying to put time and potential, whatever positions could come out of this. Because what if we go into this, Eric, and we find something that we got to have a harbor master down there? And you're down there on Saturdays because we don't have anybody to staff it yet.
Yeah, that wouldn't happen.
Well, yeah. Yes, it would. I would concur. Can we, can we say that this is on the agenda? And I'm keeping a running track of things that we want to talk about at the retreat.
Oh.
And have this, so that's, that's my instinct. Sean, I agree. I don't know, Steve, if where you are, what mind you are, Carol, I'm on the, I see you on the Zoom here. But I like this, I want to have this conversation, I just don't want to do it that soon.
Well, I know about that much about harbor masters.
Yeah.
But I would say that although we don't want to, I don't want to get us in the business of like saying, making a decision by the end of August. I also don't see where it hurt to just like have a meeting in the end of August. People want to show up and talk about it and maybe learn a little bit. And that, it's just informational, it's just getting started, thinking about it. There's never any harm about in thinking about things that are, right? And I would just say we could, I wouldn't, I would not object to doing that.
Okay, good. Carol, anything from you? Okay, um, excellent. Um, so I would like to, can we, can we, what's the best way to proceed? I would say, can we table this until our next meeting?
Is there, is there a possible way, I mean, to have a public comment for boats active on our website?
Not you, Siri.
Did that, did that answer the question? Thank you.
That's fantastic.
Siri's a bad idea.
Okay, so I, I guess what I will say is,
If you could hear that at home.
I, I um, I think that, that Steve's right, that it wouldn't hurt to have that kind of discussion.
Okay.
Um, but, and, and I did um, think about a date as a possible date being August twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Um, but that would require a motion from the boards to hold a public hearing. So you could table it or you could um, wait until after your uh, retreat, um, but that's in early August and then schedule. I, I think it would be helpful probably to, to, to schedule that tentatively.
Okay.
Uh, if that's a direction you want to head. I don't want to drive anybody in any direction.
No, 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 I, I don't mind that at all. It, it, obviously, it's something you've thought about and I, I think it's, you know, it, it won't hurt to have at least the first, you know, thing. And then our retreat is the twenty-second, which would be the Monday before that meeting. So at least then we know we're gonna take it and discuss it, and then we can go to that first meeting and, and sort of hear if people have anything to say.
That's a good idea.
Then at three, we can decide whether it'll be you or Sean who heads up that meeting.
Uh, you, yeah, enough out of you, new guy. Uh, Sean, are you, does that sound okay to you?
Yeah.
I might not be there. I, I, you know, it might be something.
I know I'm not here.
Yeah, okay, yes, he'll be somewhere.
I do know that. That was my other concern too, is making, we've all, it was hard enough to do our calendar for August.
Yeah, no, absolutely right. So, that sounds good. So Eric, does that make sense? So I would like to move that we uh, tentatively approve for a public hearing to be had about moorings and Reedfield on Friday, August twenty-sixth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to uh, approve this public hearing. Uh, is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Excellent. So uh, the twenty-sixth will be uh, that, and Eric, you set that up. We'll get that meeting going and we'll make sure that it, we.
I'll try to set that for five P M., which is the time that folks um, uh, summer folks seem to be more available Friday evenings.
Gotcha. Okay, sounds good. Um, excellent. We then move on uh, without ado um, to our next item, which is, oh my heavens, here we go. Uh, this is item twenty-three, a zero, one, zero, consider revisions to the public ways, traffic and parking ordinance. We have ten minutes allotted for this. Um, Eric, you want to take it away?
All right. So this is following up on a select board goal uh, from last August, uh, setting traffic, parking and safety uh, as one of their top priorities. Uh, this ordinance uh, is in effect. Uh, it is a select board ordinance. Uh, the board um, can consider um, adjustments, uh, amendments at any time, but we try to do it no more than once every two or three years. This was last updated in two thousand nineteen. Um, and so uh, there are a number of changes in the document uh, relating to uh, clarifications of um, uh, you know, roles and responsibilities. Uh, parking is addressed in more detail uh, because uh, it really was left pretty, pretty vague. Um, I will say that uh, we are looking at the possibility of in the future, am having time limits on certain parking stalls. But nothing, nothing is being contemplated at the moment. I, I said that we are considering the possibility of having time limits on certain parking stalls. But that's not being proposed at the current time.
Right, that's not anything, not anything that we're talking about.
There wouldn't be no uh, reduction in the number of spaces in front of the Emporium Building, which I know you're concerned about. Um, uh, there would be um, no, nothing in this, uh, dealing with the changes that have been uh, discussed in front of the post office. Uh, but um, there are changes um, affecting uh, um, the um, site distances uh, for how far away um, uh, someone uh, uh, would be from a intersection in order to park. Um, we had twenty feet, which is not a lot of time to see what's coming around the corner. So uh, in speaking with the fire chief, we did look at adjusting those site distances um, uh, to a hundred and fifty feet, unless parking is already approved. For example, Reedfield Corner, we do have parking approved there in front of the Emporium Building. Uh, but it's offset uh, from the street, which makes it uh, much less of an hindrance to visibility. So this would not be affected by these adjustments. Uh, we also have um, uh, changes to the, to the, um, the width um, of the traveled way that can be obstructed um, from ten feet to twenty feet, uh, something also discussed with the fire chief as a safety matter. Um, uh, we are looking at uh, designation, designation of areas in the public way as parking places.
Designation.
Designate.
Designation.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. We'll, we'll speak up. Uh, you want to be closer to your.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. Um, and so we uh, also, again, um, possibility of having time limits on certain um, or any parking spot. Uh, if it's appropriate to um, maintain the flow of traffic and economic activity. Um, we have uh, adjustments here to um, uh, require that crosswalks um, and pedestrian crossings uh, follow M U T C D guidelines and are installed perpendicular to the roadway, uh, as is a common practice. Uh, we are looking at uh, municipally sponsored events, uh, clarification there uh, for um, uh, road closings or any um, no parking uh, limits. We are looking at uh, centerline signage. One of the things the select board has done in the last couple of years um, that is generally supported by this ordinance, but not specifically called out is um, the use of central line signage like what we have at the crosswalks, uh, which is a great safety device, but it's not included in this ordinance specifically, and that's something that we want to do. We're also looking at curbing um, uh, and uh, speed uh, bumps, speed humps. Um, specifically identifying those as potential tools to help with traffic management and calming. Uh, because we do have uh, perennials. Um, and I mean, we've had people at the select board coming um, uh, complaining about the speeds. We get complaints regularly about speeding in town. So this is just clarifying what those tools are the select board has to address uh, potentially speeding. Uh, other changes include um, um, uh, temporary road closures for through um, traffic. Um, if we, if we need to restrict that. Uh, one of the things I'm thinking about primarily with that issue is uh, we have mud uh, issues on loose road. Uh, and that road sees a lot of traffic that's not residential. It's not for the residents who are living there. And so the residents living there have to suffer when their road is completely destroyed by people cutting off uh, two minutes from their commute. Um, and so the ability to say, this is no longer a through road, it's for um, you know, residential traffic only, that could save tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money uh, in repairs and also make the lives of those residents a lot better. So this gives us some more tools to address uh, our road conditions.
Excellent.
Uh, let's see, what else do we have? Uh, we did add an entire section. It was formally reserved. Uh, we now have a page or two dedicated to road openings. Uh, previously, we had no means of um, if someone wanted to open up our town road of ensuring that it was properly reconstructed and that there was a liability on the part of the, the construction company or the person doing that work. Uh, there was no way for us to hold them accountable if the, the road settled and the pavement cracked. Uh, now we have that option uh, for two years uh, after any construction happens. We also have a prohibition on cutting into a town road uh, within two years of paving. Uh, and that's a way to help maintain that pavement condition um, and to have folks plan ahead. Uh, so this is a section that we had envisioned, but didn't have language for. We now have language for it that helps protect the town uh, and residents and taxpayers by um, giving that accountability. Um, we then uh, the other changes include um, increasing uh, penalties. Um, we had penalties that were twenty-five uh, and fifty dollars, um, which are really too small to even really bother with. Um, we were looking at increasing the schedule there to include um, uh, again, up to one hundred dollars for a first defense, two hundred for second, five hundred for third and a thousand for the fourth. Um, the, the goal being not to have, to enforce those penalties, but having something that actually has uh, some substance to it as a potential deterrent. So uh, that is a summary of the changes that we've seen. I did also pull out the um, the list of appendices. Um, because having those included with the ordinance means that anytime we adjust those appendices, we would have to adjust the ordinance. Um, and I think it's better to just have those included as a, as a um, not as an appendix, but as a, maybe a, a reference document or something to that effect. So that we can more efficiently manage um, things like the, the, the um, parking maps or um, notices on weight limits and things like that, um, that we do update and amend regularly. So um, I guess you could consider this a first reading by the select board and we can have a second reading at a later date, but um,
You don't need a motion right now.
No, I mean, you, you could certainly, but I think it'd be best to um, give a little of the time and have some. I'm happy to take any questions from the board about any of these revisions.
I have a few questions.
Go for it, Carol.
So on two J, where it goes from twenty feet to a hundred and fifty feet from a crosswalk. So the unless otherwise designated, does that, is that the verbiage that means if it's already an approved parking spot, it's not affected?
That's, that's right. And it means that if we were to designate a parking area uh, near a crosswalk, say on Kent's Hill. Um, say we had a need for on-street parking there, we could designate that and that would potentially give an exemption. Um, or would give an exemption, the, 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 the key piece there being that we would know what was happening and we could designate a parking spot that didn't interfere with the flow of traffic or create a safety issue.
Okay, so that's unless otherwise designated.
What was that, Carol? I'm sorry.
Sorry. So unless otherwise designated or approved, can we put or something, or maybe I just don't understand the verbiage, but it, that, so if it's an approved parking spot, it's not affected by this?
That, that's right.
Correct. Yeah, if they, it's approved parking spot, no worries.
So it seems like twenty feet to a hundred and fifty feet is a huge leap. How, where does that hundred and fifty feet come from?
Well, think about it intuitively. Um, you're coming up to a crosswalk, um, and you're going fifteen to twenty, or say just in town, twenty-five miles an hour. Um, the response time that you have for twenty, uh, twenty-foot visibility is pretty insignificant. When I talked to the fire chief about this, I'd originally suggested a hundred feet. Um, and he said, you know, you could probably uh, bump it out to a hundred and fifty in most cases, because it would be better uh, visibility, especially if you're moving at twenty-five miles an hour or, or more. Um, so that was really where it came down from, was a discussion with the fire chief. Uh, and really an intuitive uh, thought about how um, how much time you need to respond to someone in a crosswalk.
So, um, like I'm just thinking of a scenario that just happened where the library had a very popular event and there's parking right in front of the library. I don't know the distance from the crosswalk to that.
Yeah, so they would um, they would move down the street uh, a, a little ways. Um, and that would be, I think, a good thing, uh, because we've seen it happen at the fireman's suppers and places like that. Um, where we did have issues with people seeing people at crosswalks. Um, and Heritage Days is another example. Uh, really, what we would be doing is just essentially uh, marking, um, you know, no parking um, uh, in that area that is beyond the, the intersection of the crosswalk and um, a hundred and fifty feet away, which in the grand scheme of things on Route seventeen really isn't that far. Uh, there's miles and miles of, of, of potential parking. Um, and we do have handicap spaces available for folks. Um, and we could also designate more, but um, it, it really is a, a sightline um, consideration.
I don't know.
Anything else, Carol?
Yep, um, so if we, so, and then it's talking about any parking in public um, ways that would leave less than twenty feet. So if we have people parking on both sides of Route seventeen for Heritage Days or the Masons or anything huge at the public town hall, whatever, does that violate that?
No, because that roadway would be, would be um, well, well in excess of that. Um, and really, it's a question of, do you want, if you have an emergency, do you want one-way traffic or two-way traffic? Uh, and so in speaking with the fire chief, uh, it seems as though ten feet really isn't enough. It's barely enough for a fire truck. Uh, twenty feet is, is appropriate. There is however, a mechanism um, with, to get prior approval for um, uh, from the road commissioner for an instance where you might have less than that. Again, it's all about having a discussion and being able to prepare for things like this in advance. Um, and so that's the, that's the, the twenty-foot, ten to twenty, uh, is again, another access issue um, about making sure that we have the ability to get emergency vehicles and have two-way traffic on our roads.
So did you say parking on both sides of seventeen would not be allowed? Would that be violating that?
No, seventeen is all, all set.
Okay, so let me put out another scenario. If there's parking on both sides of the street by the fairgrounds, which we've seen because of overflow. Does that violate that area?
That would. We would not allow parking on both sides of the street on the fairgrounds, and that would, uh, that would be a safety issue.
Yeah.
Okay, so when you say that there's um, like a mech- mechanism to get approval, what, what? I've never heard of that, but is that, um, I don't know what that process is or what the timeline is.
That would be rather than, rather than outright prohibition on parking on a road that would narrow it down less than twenty feet. Um, they would, uh, anybody that wanted to do that would talk to the road commissioner to get permission to make sure it could be done safely.
So again, it's just getting in touch with the road commissioner, communicating that that would be what you'd want. You're having an event, you're having a wedding in your backyard. Um, something like that.
Something like that, yes. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, and if we wanted it, something to be a permanent approval, we could designate parking spaces.
I guess I, I don't know how many people would, um, let's say have a graduation and it's a one-time thing and have parking on both sides of the street and are not even aware that there's going to be a penalty. It seems really rather steep um, when it may not be a, a widely known issue for something that might be.
So, yeah, I think ju- just like any kind of um, enforcement action, education is a key piece. Um, and, and the honestly, there was already a requirement for the ten-foot here. Uh, and there already is a requirement that you don't park on both sides of the road. That's been in effect for a long time. Um, since two thousand nineteen, I guess.
But this just sort of gives it a, a, more, an update as a whole ordinance and ways.
Yeah, with a focus on maintaining safety and sightlines.
Gotcha.
It just wasn't enforced.
But, but I hear what you're saying, Carol. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, one more thing. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, there was also the size of a culvert going from fifteen inches to twelve inches. Why is that?
Uh, that is because uh, a fifteen-inch culvert uh, can be oftentimes oversized. Uh, and it costs more to install and it's much more likely to heave up in the wintertime. Uh, and so we had actually already amended this uh, in our land use ordinance. So this is a matter of consistency, first of all, but uh, it's also another one of those common sense changes where um, if someone doesn't need to pay for and install a culvert that's more likely to cause uh, damage and rise up, then we don't want to uh, force that on anybody. Uh, and so a twelve-inch culvert, if it can meet the requirements um, to, to move the water uh, and not have a washout, uh, then that's what we want to do. So uh, it's, it's essentially downsizing to make it easier um, for folks to uh, afford these culverts and also uh, less likely that the town then has to repair them later on, which saves tax money.
Sorry, Eric, I just want to make a motion, extend the meeting fifteen minutes.
I second that. Uh, all in favor? Thank you. Carol, I see you in the affirmative. So uh,
So, let me just,
Does that make sense, Carol? Does that, yeah?
Let me just say why I asked that is in front of our house, we have a runoff once every ten years. It's enormous, which causes a nice slick on seventeen and people to go out of control. So that's my only concern about reducing the size of culverts is that the water handling, you know, doesn't get reduced where we're gonna have ice slicks in the middle of winter.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree, Carol. And, and the, the issue unfortunately on, on Route seventeen there is that there, there really is no culvert. It's all underground. Um, and so that's something that when we look at, uh, because there is a whole process, as you see, uh, for reviewing culvert placement, um, that we look at things like the water flow, the um, the, the, the pitch of the land, uh, the sizing of culverts around it. Um, and there are cases where I've had said to, to residents, well, you don't need a culvert at all, because this perfectly hits the top of the hill and water breaks both directions. And, and I'm, I'm always glad when I can do that, because that's easier for me and easier for them. Um, and certainly better long-term. Um, so there is a little bit of discretion there, as there is with many, many um, of these issues. Um, but I think that uh, it, it is a matter of consistency.
Excellent.
So this policy, is this just in the discussion phase or?
Yes, ma'am. This is the first reading technically. So this can be, i- if you have other issues with this, you have it in the packet. You can get in touch with Eric and, and do that. I'm going to do that. I plan to do that just for uh, the sake of keeping this meeting moving. So um, absolutely, look through it, ask him questions. the sake of keeping this meeting moving. So absolutely, look through it, ask him questions. That's the best way to go. Anything else from the select board here in person? Very well, thank you for that first reading. We are going to move on now to item twenty-three zero one one. Assign and direct voting for the Maine Municipal Association Executive Committee. We have five minutes for this. It's in your packet. And you can take a look at it. I will tell you, it is on page sixty-nine of your packet and the plan is on seventy is the voting ballot. We don't actually do this. What I would like to do is I would move to authorize Eric to vote on our behalf. Eric, that's usually what we do, yes?
It is especially when there are four spots and four applicants, one per each.
And we're not, we're not writing in Catherine because she's not here.
Yes, I think her birthday gift is she has another meeting to go to. Very well, I make a motion to authorize Eric Dyer to as the town manager to submit our vote for the Maine Municipal Association Voting Ballot Election of Vice President and Executive Committee Members.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And Carol, I see you voting in the affirmative. Thank you very much. Our last item is item twenty-two zero twelve. Consider a draft agenda for the select board retreat. I think that this is in your packet on page seventy-one. And you can see, just so everyone knows, the select board retreat is something we do every year. It is open to the public and it is a way that we set goals for the the coming year. And we take those goals from basically things that we each bring to the table as well as things that we think would be good ideas. The 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 whole experience is really good, I find, as a select board member, because then all of our actions have goals to fall back on. And part of why I like that is when you have a set of goals to always be working for, that I think gives the board a little bit more focus. So anybody have any questions or concerns about the draft agenda? Carol, I'm going to go to Zoom first if you don't have anything. Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. Anybody here?
I was just wondering, I I feel like it's a packed agenda. Which is good, but I'm just wondering if we might need a moderator or just someone that's going to do time.
Well, I'm glad you asked that. Good segue. We actually are going to have a moderator because we do want to go through that. And I think it's important that that's a great segue. We have asked Bruce Burgoyne, who is the former select board chair and has served on the select board before to moderate the the meeting. That way, and I'll just tell you, that way, I, as the chairman of this board, it's nice to participate in these goal makings as as just as not a leadership position. So it's nice to have Bruce come in to be the moderator to help keep us on task and also to to help make sure that all five of us are participating. So we will have a moderator to help keep things moving. But I I I'm excited about it. Anything else, Steve? All right. I will tell you that right now. And as a matter of fact, it is August twenty-second. And I think we're doing five thirty P M. August twenty-second, five thirty P M. If there are no other, yes?
I heard from somebody who's on Zoom that they sent you messages on questions that may not have been addressed or brought up.
All I have on here is stuff from Christine Poolen. And I have noted, we we take all of these down, but I, we're going to take that to the, I mentioned to her as well. That will be included in the the retreat. Yeah. And we keep a track of all these messages. So we have it and I let her know that as well. In the morning. So bring coffee and munchkins in in the P M., in the P M., in the P M. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second? Thank you, Steve. You have seconded it. If there's no other discussion, all in favor? Carol, I see you voting in the affirmative. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.